Are you here for this new council meeting? Are you here for the?
We're here, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
Welcome.
There's another meeting happening?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Okay.
I am.
Okay. Meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Somerville?
Here.
Councilmember Wilcoxen? Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
President.
Mayor Richardson? Councilmember Morgan?
President.
Councilmember Simmons?
President.
And Mr. Jones Chance?
President.
We have a call.
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Wilcoxen and Mayor Richardson.
Board.
It will be seconded on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so now I entertain a motion for an agenda approval.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Or move it seconded, any changes or updates? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented? Yeah?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda has been approved. So now we will move to public comments. You'll have three minutes to address councils. And if you're online, you also have an opportunity. Is there a sign of, oh, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, so I guess we can start with those in chambers and then move to those on Zoom with us.
All right, we have Ryan McCoy.
It's Rob.
Oh, Robin McCoy, I'm sorry.
Okay, hello again, everyone. My name is Robin McCoy and I am attorney here. I've been practicing for thirty years, not thirty years, twenty years as an attorney. And I'm running for state representative in the thirty-second district. I have my assistant, Dr. Michaela Evans, here with me in some literature. I've met with some of you and I would welcome the opportunity to meet with more of you individually to get your perspective about the issues that are pertinent to the residents here in the city of Ypsilanti. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michaela Evans, excuse me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong.
Hello, my name is Dr. Michaela Evans. And I didn't know I signed up for public comment, but I just signed in. But I appreciate what you're doing here, what you're doing for our city. And I look forward to being involved in. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Heidi?
Good evening, my name is Heidi Jock, H-E-I-D-A-K. And I'd like to thank everyone, I know running this city is a lot of difficult work. And I appreciate everything you're doing to satisfy everybody's interest in the city. It's a great place to be. I'm here today regarding the proposed housing development. And I'm concerned that we're looking to put too many people in too small homes without enough amenities in those homes in too small of a place. And I also think there's a danger in putting people in one location, kind of segregating people. I would really like us, as a city, to look at integrated housing where we can have higher income, middle income, and lower income options in one community, in one neighborhood. I had the pleasure of being in Alexandria, Virginia, a couple of years ago. Across the street, neighbors who would meet at the bus stop and such, they're on the street. You had single homes, maybe multi-living unit homes, were very old. Something you might find like a K-10 or so, across from a million-plus townhouse. Townhouses that cost a million plus. And the integrated city, integrated housing was wonderful. I was enchanted with it. Because you could walk either home and just be with your neighbors. And they could be from any financial level at all, but it was integrated housing. And to me, this spoke volumes about what we should be as a community. And I'd really like you to look at that and let's get away from packing too many people in too small a place based on their income. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed over?
Yes, we have Jill.
Hi, my name's Jill Klaus. I keep following her, she's cool. Anyways, I too am concerned about that development. Finding out that they're going to be slab houses, four hundred square feet for a hundred sixty thousand. I think getting people to buy those with incentives and everything sounds, you know, great in the beginning, but what's the resale value going to be? How are these people going to possibly resell, sell their house for a hundred sixty thousand when they have no garages, no basements, no sports, no nothing? I think it's wrong to do, to get somebody stuck in something like that. I think they're going to be too close. I think with the rural tract closed off at Park and Grove, it's going to be dangerous for those people. They are going to try crossing over to Michigan out unless there is a big walkway over the bridge. And how many people are over tracks and how many people are going to use that? I just think we need to rethink having a development there. I just think there's, there's too many negatives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have five attendees and there's no one that has their hand raised.
And then do we have anyone else attending that wants to speak?
I'm not going to be before you long. This is not going to be before you long. But I want you guys to imagine yourselves can't swim. You drop someplace in a big ocean. You can't swim. And you asking for help. Help, help, help. And help never come. And you get burnt out from asking for help. And it never come. Oftentimes, we overlook folks that need help. We don't pay any, no attention. They don't really need help. But in order for our city police department to further itself, mainly in that detective department, we need help in that detective department. Because you know, when you got, we take a lesson from George Floyd. When you got a foot on your neck, you can't breathe. We need a department that's going to be fair and equal to every individual in that department. Dignity and respect is due to every officer in there. And it's going to be left up to council and the city management to make sure that happens. I'm not a bastard of the policeman, no I'm not. But I'm a basher of bad policing. And what I see happening now is the same thing happened some years ago, bad policing. And I would not stand for bad policing, and I don't think you guys will too. So what I'm doing, I'm just asking you guys. Administration and the police department, make them get their foot off of those officers' necks so they can continue to do a good job protecting and serving our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to respond?
Hello, my name's Reverend Miles. I'm here just to touch on the resolution for the proposed, or rather, the proposed resolution for the City of Ypsilanti Committee. It's going to be celebrated the two-hundredth anniversary of its founding in 2023. And I know that there have been three distinct groups over the last two years that have tried to bring together a celebration for our unique city. And so I think it'll, it'll bring a lot of joy to see if that celebration finally meet fruition with the help of this committee, so thank you.
Thank you. There's no one online?
Hello, and my wife?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay, thank you. Basically, what I wanted to say is that the CBO process for 220 North Park is going to be rather critical in terms of resolving a lot of the issues and the tensions at, or at least addressing some of the issues and the tensions between the community who basically have worked on that project in terms of developing and understanding how it would be to live there because many of us are actually income-eligible for the subsidy. So as we increasingly worked on community planning in terms of discussions, we increasingly realized that there was no division between the issues that were developing outside the site and the issues that were developing inside the site. But the end result is, is that the community has put probably a year and a half or two years' worth of discussion into this. But there hasn't been a lot of response from Renovari or from the city. And this is sort of the last chance to resolve a lot of these tensions, or some of these tensions. I don't think we're going to resolve all of them. I don't think we're going to come up with like this wonderful kumbaya movement where every, everybody's going to be happy about it. But I think that unless that dialogue occurs, unless some of the studies and things that we've asked to see are revealed, unless there actually begins to do a dialogue between the developer and the community, it's going to be really a difficult period to build that project. They're on dead-end streets. Everybody who has to go there to work has to pass every, everybody else on those streets who've been basically talking about it. So I think this is your chance to pull that together and maybe do some decent dialogue, share some information. There was information that if we had before the Monday meeting, a lot of the comments would have been made. But we didn't get it until we were there and we couldn't even see the screen half the time. So I think figuring that out and doing it really well on the part of the city is a really critical part of whatever happens to that property. And a lot of these issues that we've identified are bigger than the property. If nothing gets developed down there, there's stuff we still have to deal with because we've come to an understanding of situations in the neighborhood that are really major and really potentially problematic. So thank you very much, but I just suggest really be careful as you put together the CBO.
Thank you. Are there any additional hands?
If anyone else would like to speak in the attendees list, please indicate by raising your hand. You can go through.
All right, so seeing none, we'll close audience participation. Thank you all. All right, now we'll move into presentations. Can you read the first proclamation?
Yes. Whereas Habs Restaurant began operation in nineteen thirty-four, celebrating eighty-seven years in business, the restaurant has ceased operations permanently, closed its doors. And whereas, in family-owned business, the restaurant was originally known as the Habs Brothers Cafe by Oscar and Otto Habs. And whereas the cafe was the first establishment in Washtenaw County where food was the main attraction for the customer, beer and wine also complemented the meal. And whereas travelers and local residents alike agreed to Habs being a place where it's fun to eat. And whereas the brothers took pride in providing large portions of amazing food and result their customer base increase. And whereas the brothers expanded in nineteen sixty-three by adding two additional storefronts that makes up Habs Restaurants today. And whereas in nineteen seventy-six, Mike Cabot and Harvey Glaze purchased the restaurant from the Habs Brothers. Harvey Glaze was replaced by Steve Yanian after retiring in nineteen eighty-six. And whereas in two thousand, Dave Cabot, the youngest son of Mike Cabot, replaced Steve Yanian. And whereas, over the past twenty years in partnership, the Cabots continue to, continue the tradition of maintaining the old-fashioned personal, personal touches inherited from the original Habs Brothers. And whereas, and whereas, as Habs will no longer be physically in the city of Ypsilanti, we will cherish their family-style dining, great customer service, and delicious food. And now therefore, I, Lois Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, on behalf of the City Council, hereby this day honor Habs Restaurant for its great impact in the city of Ypsilanti. We thank you for your service and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Given under my hand and seal of the City of Ypsilanti, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor.
Yes, we just want to echo my gratitude to Habs for all the years that they were in the community. Are there any other council members who have anything they'd like to say before we move on?
I was just going to say farewell to Habs because I have to feed generations of Ypsilanti. And I hope the next one they make are better for their future.
Just, yeah. You know, quite a place.
Happy hour.
And really good chicken. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share? All right, so we'll move on. We'll have now our audit presentation from Daniel Clark. Are they with us on Zoom?
Yes, good evening. Good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, we're hoping for a successful presentation tonight.
I think we're going to be just fine tonight. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
All right, and you all can get started as soon as you're ready.
Am I able to share screen that says it's disabled?
Okay.
Yes, I think we're about to make you co-host so that you can share.
Okay, that seemed to work, thank you. You guys able to see this then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as stated last time we were together, my name is Daniel Clark. With me, I have Dan Merritt as well. And we're going to be presenting the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one financial audit results for the City of Ypsilanti. So agenda items tonight include just introduction of the team members not here on the call. We have certain required board communications. We have your financial results. And then we have a few upcoming accounting pronouncements we want to just make everyone aware of. And then we'll open it up for any questions, but feel free to stop me with questions as we go along if that makes more sense. So again, I am the signing principal. I've been working with the city a couple of years. Appreciate the partnership. Again, as I had stated, Dan Merritt, the manager on the audit comes on the line tonight and will also be presenting some of the information. And then Taylor Schaefer, she was the senior again on the account on the audit, and she's been working with the city several years as well. So as stated, we do have required annual board communications. The first one and the most important is that we did issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on your June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one financial statements. So that's exactly what you would be looking for as far as an opinion goes. Number two, we are asked to communicate any new accounting pronouncements that were, that were implemented during the year. And there was one this year related to Gatsby eighty-four, related to your fiduciary, your fiduciary activity. So you had an OPEB Internal Service Fund, which as part of the implementation process, we actually are now presenting that, or the city is presenting that, as an OPEB Trust Fund on your financials. So you'll see there is a new OPEB Trust Fund. And OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits on your financials that you may have noticed different from last year. Number three, we're asked to assess your, your, your accounting estimates, and those include things like depreciation on your capital assets, allowance on your accounts receivables, those inputs that get used to calculate your, your pension liability and your, your other post-employment liability. We assess those and deemed all those to be reasonable. Number four, we're also very happy to say we encounter no difficulties performing the audit this year. We appreciate Reagan and his staff's help. As always, they were a pleasure to work with and answered all our questions, provided us all the information that we needed and felt like it was a successful audit this year. So thank you for his, his leadership in the finance department as well as all the different people that we've worked with at the city. Number five and number six, we're also asked to let you know whether or not we had any audit adjustments that rose to the level of being material. And we were very happy to say that there were no material misstatements that were noted as part of the audit process. So that speaks to the level of accuracy that when we do get the information, that is, that it is materially correct. We did have one uncorrected immaterial misstatement that related to some parking receivables that had previously not been able to been tracked. And I know there's a new system in place. So there was a prior period effect of that entry, and we just flowed that through the current year. It was not material enough to book in the current year. And then number six, we're very happy to say as well that we noted no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other matters. Again, speaks to the level of quality of the information that were provided and just the controls that the city has in place. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dan here, and he'll, he'll continue along in the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be walking through sort of the basic elements of your balance sheet, your assets, deferred outflows, your liabilities, deferred inflows, and also your net position or fund balance. And we'll just be talking about some of the significant changes in some of those categories and the underlying circumstances related to them. First off, cash and investments. Normal fluctuation happens every single year in cash and balances, and it's usually related to the timing of projects or cash inflows or outflows that happen around your year end. I usually don't say too much about this category other than your best resource on the adequacy of your cash investment accounts related to liquidity is always your finance department and your treasurer. Receivables, your receivables went down about four million dollars this year. This is primarily related to your lease agreements with YCUA, which are amortized on a regular schedule. Information on those is presented in note six, the financial statements, and is amortized again on a scheduled basis year over year. Your net pension asset, one of your pension plans has a net pension asset, which is always a good thing for municipality and not particularly common because most plans are not overfunded. But your net pension, pension asset increased slightly over last year by about a million dollars. That's related primarily to strong investment performance on pension plans. Again, this is going to be a theme for a couple of other categories as well. This was a common experience for municipalities in Michigan with pension assets. The market did quite well in fiscal year twenty-one. More information about that pension asset can be found in the required supplementary information to financial statements if you're looking for detail about that. Net capital assets, detailed information on that capital assets can be found in note seven. Essentially, if you purchase significant capital assets, your net capital assets are going to decrease, and that's sort of offset by the regular depreciation on existing assets or disposal of existing capital assets. This year, your purchases of assets such as infrastructure building and improvements or vehicles and equipment exceeded your depreciation by about half a million dollars. And then just real quick on deferred outflows, we don't usually talk too much about these, but these are sort of an accounting treatment. The Gatsby will issue standards that say there are changes to your pension and OPEB plans that can't flow through a single year, i.e. that the change relates, they believe, to a specific set number of future years, and the effect of that is sort of amortized over time. You see the, the, the changes in these deferred outflows are reflected in your RSI if you're looking for more information on that. Let's go to the next slide here. Liabilities and deferred inflows, accounts payable, these are sort of your, your regular payments to vendors and other outside entities. Again, these fluctuate regularly based on projects that are open. One significant portion of that this year was your major street projects that were open in the, in two thousand twenty that were completed and no longer open at the end of two thousand twenty-one. Long-term debt is paid down on a regular basis according to the amortization schedules of the city's bonded debt. If you look at note ten in the financial statements, you'll see detailed information on the city's bonded debt. And the decline in balance was almost exclusively related to regular principal payments on that debt. Net pension and net OPEB liabilities. Again, we see that sort of similarly to your net pension asset increasing, your net pension liability and your net OPEB liabilities decrease. Again, this is strong investment performance helping the city's net position in these plans, increase in net asset good, decrease in net liability also good. And then our last three categories here are again deferred inflows. Remember, this is an amortization of a change that's going to run through several years, and it's sitting on the balance sheet while we, we do that regular amortization over time. Let's go to the next slide. This chart here shows the components of your net position. Again, it's very common for municipalities to have a large portion of their net position invested in capital assets. That's your infrastructure, buildings, equipment. Capital assets are purchased over long periods of time and are in use for several years. And so that investment is usually a significant portion of most municipalities' net position. Your, your restricted net position is funds set aside for things such as highways, public safety, debt service, or pension benefits. That makes up eighteen percent of your net position. And finally, which we'll talk about a little more in just a second here, you have a negative unrestricted net position at a fifty-nine percent. That's primarily due to your debt and net pension liabilities. On the next slide or two, we'll talk about what that means. So here we have our sort of changes in net position year over year. You can sort of see that the line on the top here is your net investment in capital assets. You see that holding very steady over the last couple of years. This is a pretty normal trend for municipalities to, to see a fairly steady net position. You're, you're depreciating existing assets and purchasing new ones, and that, that holding about you then is fairly normal. Again, your restricted assets, you see that big jump from eighteen to nineteen. That's when you started recording your pension benefits as restricted and it's part of that net pension asset. And then from, from that point in twenty nineteen till now, those restricted funds are staying fairly similar, again, just some minor fluctuation depending on what's set aside for things like highways and streets year over year. Let's go to the next slide. Finally, here we talk about our sort of unrestricted net position. On the top line there, you see what your unrestricted net position would look like without your pension and OPEB liabilities. And on the bottom, you see what, what it is with those net pension and OPEB liabilities. When the Gatsby started requiring municipalities to record the net pension liability on their books back in around twenty sixteen, almost everyone went into deficit on their unrestricted. You can see that you would have a small positive net position in your unrestricted without that, that big liability that you have to record on your books. But that both categories haven't fluctuated too dramatically over the years and are just sort of the regular activity of the city. Revenues and expenses. You can see that the city's revenues and expenses have stayed fairly consistent year over year. We had that one small decline in net position in twenty nineteen, but other than that, net position has stayed fairly consistent. And you see in two thousand twenty-one, you have a net gain in that position. That's again primarily related to, to strong investment returns in two thousand twenty-one. Let's go to the next slide here. Major revenue line items and governmental funds. Again, we can see not too much change in these, sort of a steady increase year over year. We have property taxes. As your property tax base increases, you see property tax revenue increase slowly over time. Again, this is a very good thing for the city to see property tax base continuing to increase. It would be a serious concern if your property tax base were to start to decrease dramatically. And your intergovernmental revenue increasing year over year with a slight uptick between twenty and twenty-one as more state aid is provided. Next slide. Major revenue items in your governmental funds. The significant increase that you see there in charges for services, Daniel, I'm sorry, I don't have this one on my, on my notes.
Yeah, I can take this one.
Okay.
Yeah, so you'll see over the last couple of years, that top line, the blue line, your licenses and permits actually went down in twenty twenty one. And this was very similar in, in a lot of municipalities due to COVID and, and how that restricted certain activities from occurring. So you'll see you went from nine hundred forty seven thousand to about six hundred ninety one thousand related to licenses and permits. Same thing with your fines and forfeitures down at the very bottom. You went from four hundred fifty four thousand in twenty twenty to about fifty six thousand in twenty twenty one. I know that significant increase in the charges for services line items went from five sixty three to one point three, and I think there was some some reclassification of certain items that were previously in licenses and permits and fines and forfeitures that got reclassed to charges for services. And then we'll move on to revenue and expenses in the general fund. You'll see at the, for twenty twenty one, the general fund had about seventeen point three million in revenue. An increase from fifteen point eight last year. And you had expenditures of sixteen point two million, which actually gave you a net income of one point one million dollars in twenty twenty one. Also, it's, it's good to note, if you look over the last four years, that the city had net income in, in all four years, which is a really good sign and a healthy sign of the general fund. Back in two thousand eighteen, had about half a million in net income, and that has slowly increased every year since twenty eighteen to now you're at one point one million dollars. The last financial slide I wanted to present was your general fund coverage ratio. So this is a good gauge to see how much of current expenditures or annual expenditure sit in your unrestricted or your unassigned fund balance and general fund. And it measures it by number of months. So you currently have about four months sitting in your unrestricted fund balance and general fund, and that has increased from two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty one. Benchmark here, typically, the GFOA would recommend that you have this around that three or four month mark to help with any potential cash flow issues. Anything under three months would potentially cause cash flow issues. Not necessarily, but again, this is just a gauge to show how much is sitting there, and I think you're sitting in a, a I'm a really healthy spot, and it stayed relatively consistent over the last four years. And then the last thing we had talked about mentioning were just upcoming accounting pronouncements. And there are several on this slide and then one on the next slide. Most of these, you'll see after them, we have a, meaning that they really have no applicability, or we don't think they will in future periods related to the city's business. The only one that may have some, some applicability will be Gatsby eighty seven, which is related to leases, and we will work with the city as we approach their fiscal year end twenty twenty two to make sure that they're ready. And what that means is typically in years past, there's been a classification of operating versus capital leases, some on your books as debt and some just recorded as expense throughout the year. This way, in essence, treat all leases the same and bring them all on your books as debt. But again, we'll work with the finance team to make sure that they have all the information needed to, to properly implement this standard. And with that, that's the end of the presentation. Can answer any questions that there may be?
All right, thank you. Council, what questions do you have?
Yeah, I have a question about slide twelve. Just looking at it, I guess I have a lot of questions about the trends in between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one for all three. For licenses and permits, charges and for services and fines and forfeitures. Is there a way that we can get like a breakdown of those three categories? And kind of more information on how that happened?
And also the large uptick there on the charges for services. Those are for our P eight to eighty nine funding for, for the service event for providing that fire services. So in the past, we were provided only fifty percent of the funding. Since twenty eighteen, they've been funding a hundred percent.
The one that I'm super curious about is the fines and forfeitures. Yeah, okay. But also, yeah, the then like the dip in licenses, I'm just curious about licensing. I mean, curious about all of it, I just. That makes sense, yeah. For this, the charges for service, yeah. So do parking fines fall into that category? All right.
All of those fines, we didn't, we didn't really do parking enforcement. All of those things, and then we also, we're not just getting back. And we're still having an issue because if you go to a unit that has COVID paper.
Yeah, that makes sense. Well, the part that's like interesting is the licenses and permits went went down, it went down, but then the charges for services went up at the same time. But is that because of the EMU? Okay, yeah, yeah, I just like trying to wrap my, okay, cool, thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you for the presentation. And I just want to ask a question. I don't have the jargon and language in finance, but what's the main difference between material and immaterial?
As far as the, what would cause an adjustment or none, is that what you're talking about?
That's by definition, when you said no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, but what's the difference between material or immaterial?
Yeah, sure, I'll go back to that slide. So are you talking about number six there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so.
I just want to know the difference between what could be considered material or immaterial.
Sure, so we have findings that are listed in three different buckets. One is the most severe, which is material weakness. All the way to other matters, which is more of a management letter comment. Typically, when it's a material weakness, that has to do with, especially has to do with a significant control has been either violated or it failed, or in relation to a, a material audit adjustment was needed to be made. And materiality is based on the fund in which we're looking at. So we have a standard in which calculates materiality based on the fund. So it's, it's typically a percentage of either total assets or total revenue. So it can be a different materiality depending on what fund we're talking about. But that's typically when something is in excess of that materiality either threshold or when it relates to a specific key control that we feel like is imperative. That if it did fail or that it was violated, that that would potentially be critical for the organization. That's what we would typically call a material weakness. One step below that is a significant deficiency, so we still feel like it's important, but it maybe didn't rise to that same level of materiality. That's what we would call a significant deficiency, and then other matters is more of just management comments that we feel like are best practices that don't qualify for either of the other two findings.
I really appreciate that thorough answer. And how long did the audit take from start to finish?
We typically start the audit, the actual field work occurs in October. We typically spend one or two weeks then, and then from there, it takes usually about a month or so to, to prep the actual financial report, which is a, I think a two or three hundred page report. That's, that's issued as part of your financial statement audit. It includes stat tables and management discussion analysis notes, et cetera. So that's a pretty lengthy process. So it typically we issue before Christmas, so usually mid to late December. But this year, there was a, that Gatsby eighty four implementation that caused some questions at the end that had its issue in January instead of December this year. Related to the trust fund.
Thank you. I just want to probably thank a finance director, Reagan, and his team for keeping us physically responsible. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Any additional questions or comments? All right, yes, thank you, Mr. Last staff for our successful audit. All right, well, thank you all so much for being with us and for coming back again after our technical difficulties too soon. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to our ordinance. Mister John Chance, you have that first.
It's Resolution twenty twenty two dash zero five seven.
Resolution number twenty twenty, uh, two thousand twenty two dash zero five seven. Result by the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti, titled In ordinance term in chapter one, general provisions of Ypsilanti City Code. By limiting section one dash fourteen. Enforcement authority for the code.
The modern second is.
Good evening, council. So sorry that this is a very long title to this ordinance. It did amend a few different things, and I'll, I'll explain the overall generalization why. So in the building department, the city is going through some retirements that were known for a long time, but they're all kind of coming at the same point. Oh, so with, with that being said, we've tried to figure out what the best way to actually move forward when it comes to enforcing our planning and zoning and historic district commission codes, because currently it's done from the file by the building department manager. And really, it should be done by the experts in those. And so we've had this discussion for a very long time to actually have this done by city planner and the preservation planner. But it's never been in the code. It has to be a code enforcement official. So the first change is allowing us to actually have them issue citations when the code is not followed. That's, that's the first step, allowing my department or experts in their field to actually. Second, is in talking about the housing affordability and accessibility work that we've been doing. We really want to try to find a way to have really good landlords allowed to have three year certificates if they meet a huge amount of standards to make sure that they're, they're filing for all of the documentation at time, make sure they don't have the, all the same violations, make sure that they don't have a lot of property maintenance complaints. They get all those in one time. If that happens, then they will actually be allowed to have a three year certificate instead of a two year certificate. Those are the two big things. There's a lot of areas in the code where it had to be updated, so that's why it looks like it's a lot. Then there's also a technical fix on when we issue a certificate that's been issued over many years, about the code sets, we kind of did a staff requested update, allow it for the certificate to start after the first inspection, not just on a rolling piece. Jennifer, I'm looking at your face, and I don't know. Okay. So does anyone have any questions? I know that's a kind of a broad category, but, but I didn't want to read every bit of that. It's kind of changing to this area, but these were things to help us succession plan, to make sure that it's not one person doing everything. Make sure that our good property owners that don't have any issues on any of the properties to be allowed to have an extra year and technical things to help us. Rental inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we'll come back around to council questions. Oh, the public hearing is now open. If there's any member of the audience who wants to speak about this, or any, or any. Is anyone on the attendees list who would like to speak? Please indicate by raising your hand. Or in the audience. All right, then, Mister John Chance, can you read the record to the public? Oh, it's long too, yeah.
Yeah. Resolution of twenty twenty two dash zero five A, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, appearing for an ordinance to an chapter one general provisions of the Ypsilanti City Code. By limiting section one dash fourteen enforcement authority for the code. And that the recipe into the record be officially closed. I so move.
Mark, is the movement seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Okay, questions, council? Councilmember Somerville?
So for the planning staff, so for the city planner and for the new preservation planner, would they both be allowed to issue the same types of violations?
So the way the ordinance is written, technically, yes. However, the city manager gives the authority to issue any citation. And so the preservation planner would issue the preservation ticket, the city planner would issue the city planner ticket. If the city planner was out of the office for a period of time, the, the reservation planner could issue those citations. They are trained in that, but the goal is to also make sure that it's not one person who can issue a citation, so that's definitely. So that's a long answer to say, yes, they could write the same citations, but in, in prac, in practical, in practicality, they would not.
In addition to the ordinance officer, these two would now be.
Well, the ordinance officer is always better.
Right.
Yes, but we're working on restructuring some things to give it a little bit more action.
That is. Counsel, what other question?
What, 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 what does it mean where it says, um, the following non-police personnel are hereby authorized to serve appearance ticket? For all ordinance officers, what does that mean to serve appearance?
So that's what our violations are. They're, they're appearing until they appear in front of lit administrative areas.
And so these, this group of people here are now endowed with the authority to do that.
The only people that are being added to this list are the planning department, any development person, any development department personnel, every one of those other officials, I have our word.
Thank you.
No question?
I don't think so.
Anyone else? All right, definitely clear. If there are no other questions or comments from council, you can go ahead and call them out.
All right, so councilmember Somerville?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mister John Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembr?
Yes.
Or yes, one no, motion carry.
Councilmember Morgan, you have our next resolution. Twenty twenty two dash zero five nine?
Resolution number twenty twenty two dash oh five nine is resolved by the city. The resolve of the council of the city was to let the minutes of March first, twenty twenty two be approved.
For our option within support. Any questions concerned? All right, they're done. Please call them out.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mister John's chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tembr?
Yes.
And councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carry.
All right, councilmember Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Yes, so resolution number two zero two two dash two six zero was all by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. There is on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two, Russian President Vladimir Putin announced a special military operation in the Ukraine, and soon after, the Russian military launched a full scale invasion of its neighbor, including sending troops into the country and bombing major cities. And whereas the unjustified invasion has already caused needless anguish and loss of life, Ukrainian soldiers have been killed or wounded. Thousands of refugees have fled to neighboring countries to escape danger. And whereas the attack is unprovoked and demonstrates a blatant violation of the Budapest memorandum, a nineteen ninety four agreement between the United States, Russia, And whereas the attack is unprovoked and demonstrates a blatant violation of the Budapest memorandum, a nineteen ninety-four agreement between the United States, Russia, and Great Britain. And whereas President Putin has continued to demonstrate a dangerous disregard of international law and chilling indifference to the unnecessary loss, loss of life. And has indicated that Russia remains a powerful nuclear threat. And whereas it is vital that we remain united in our condemnation of statements and actions that pretend a global nuclear threat. Yet resolved that the council, city council of the city of Ypsilanti join the world in a decondemning the Russian invasion of the Ukraine. And urge the world community to join in the sanctioning of Russia. Yet further resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti direct the city clerk for this resolution to President Biden from U.S. House and Senate, I so move.
Right, then moved and supported, any remarks or comments from council? That's it all, last day.
Yeah.
All right, for peace. All right, well, then, please call them off.
All right, so council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. John's chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And council member Somerville, I believe you have the next resolution on that.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six one. It is resolved by the city, sorry. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas Ypsilanti was founded in eighteen twenty-three. And twenty twenty-three will mark the bicentennial of the settlement, and whereas Ypsilanti has a rich history, and whereas it is right and proper and in public interest that the history of Ypsilanti and its bicentennial be remembered, publicized and celebrated, and whereas state law MCL one, two, three, point eight five one, authorize municipal expenditures for centennial celebrations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti Bicentennial Commission is hereby established to plan an Ypsilanti bicentennial celebration for the city. The bicentennial commission shall have not fewer than seven and not more than fifteen members appointed by the mayor and heard by city council, the commission members shall include representatives from the city, charter township of Ypsilanti, Eastern Michigan University, the Ypsilanti DDA, the Ypsilanti Visitors and Convention Bureau, also known as YC REO, and interested members of the community. All meetings of the commission shall be in accordance with the Michigan Open Meetings Act. The commission shall adopt bylaw subject to the approval of council. The commission shall work under the direction of the city manager or designate and give monthly reports to city council. The commission shall submit a budget for city council, by, for approval by city council. The commission for the city shall solicit and accept monetary and in-kind donations that will be deposited with the city and accounted for by the city. The city shall budget funds for the bicentennial that may be released upon the order of the city manager and approved by the finance, the finance director, and I so move.
Move.
And moved and supported, so discussion, council member Somerville?
Yeah, I want to make two amendments. Um, the first amendment I would like to make is, um, where we describe who can be, um, members, actually, Mr. Bar, I have a question for you. To, when we describe the, um, participation for one councilperson from each ward for liaisons, should we add a separate line or should I fit it in a whole description of the?
There's a separate line.
Separate line, okay. Um, I move to add a line between the description of the commission and that we would, the Open Meetings Act line, that three members of council, one from each ward, shall act as liaisons.
All right. Is the movement supported, so discussion on the amendment?
We can do this. Okay, we could, I feel like they're pretty basic, yeah, so the second one, um, I just want to make sure that the bicentennial commission, um, the members can be appointed and approved by, uh, mayor and city council as we do with all of our boards and commissions.
Cool.
So, Mr. Bar, do you recommend that we do these, we do them together, or should we do them separately, actually?
Well, why don't you buy a paper case and we'll do the check.
Okay, so the first, the first amendment had already been moved and seconded, which was to add the extra line, one liaison from each ward.
Love it.
So let's discuss that point first.
Sounds good.
I think we're good on that, all right, so definitely, please follow along that amendment.
All right, so council member Simmons?
Support.
Mr. John's chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
And council member Morgan?
Yes.
Five yes, motion?
And that's, can you repeat your?
I mentioned another one, yes, and then I move to amend, um, I move to amend the section that describes the appointment process, so I'd like to add that that not, not fewer than seven and not more than fifteen members shall be appointed by the mayor and city council, shall be appointed and approved by the mayor and city council, I'm so sorry.
But I suggest that we have that read, be appointed by the mayor or two city council members.
Yes, Mr. Bar, thank you, Mr. Bar.
Yes. I'm sorry, can we repeat that? Yes, I will. Uh, I move that not fewer than seven and not more than fifteen members be appointed by the mayor or two members of city council.
This is nominated or appointed?
Uh, not nominated, sorry.
And this is fifteen, not fifteen?
Wait, I mean, I'm sorry.
Fifteen, fifteen.
So.
Okay, so.
And I think I need to re-say this, it's like, yeah, sorry. I move that not fewer than seven and not more than fifteen members be nominated by the mayor or two council members and approved by city council.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion on that amendment?
I think I'm, I, I think this is fantastic, thank you, um. Motion or the?
No, the motion, no, no, thank you.
And I, I guess, and maybe this is a separate one, but when we're thinking about those seven to fifteen people, and I know that there is a list back there that discusses who shall be included. I mean, I also want maybe at least to have one or two from each ward, make sure we have that representation, and I'm not sure when we're going to kind of, you know, how we do board and conditions, kind of like, you know, on a rolling basis, and so I don't know if we are going to establish something. Base, we naturally have that with the few groups that have been working together, I think, so I think when we're.
Okay.
So Brian and I talked, yeah, about us getting together and like talking about the applications that we receive, because there will be more people serving in a passive housing bicentennial, but that wouldn't necessarily. So, okay, and can like, happy to help you. Three of us can review the applications together too.
That's okay, perfect, thank you, so.
That's right, so now, okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? I will call.
All right, so Mr. John's chance?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
And council member Morgan?
Yes.
And council member Simmons?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carries for that second amendment.
All right, so further discussion on the, well, the resolution as amended.
Is there a timeframe for us to create this commission? Is, is there a specific timeframe that we have to have these people nominated and chosen by?
Uh, as, as soon as possible, because we're getting really close to the next year.
Yeah.
So the way it'll work, once we approve this, the city clerk, uh, I believe the application process will be just like any other commission, and I'm hoping that, um, by the next council meeting, we'll have a listing that we can nominate altogether.
Just for clarity, uh, it within the resolution it states, whereas state law MCL one, two, three, dot eight five, one authorizes municipal expenditures for centennial celebrations, right, so it's authorized. And then at the very end, it says the city shall budget funds for the bicentennial, or and commission for the city shall solicit and accept monetary and in-kind donation, so what does that mean, is that money set aside for it, or we, the money set aside for it is the money that they fundraise?
Sure, so hopefully, um, obviously during our budget conversations later in the year, um, I will probably be asking folks to support some allocation towards the fund. Um, I think that there's already a number of people that will be donating and, um, trying to gain sponsorships from local, um, members of the community and businesses. But I do anticipate that there will be a desire for us to put in funds from the city.
But I'm saying where it says authorized, does that, does that mean, does that mean it's already authorized, there's already?
The state allows municipalities to spend funds on this.
Okay.
And Mr. Bar, um, could elaborate further on that, because he's the one that brought it to my attention.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Bar?
Well, yeah, I just want to know, is there a certain amount of money that we can limit it, is it a limited amount of money that we can use that aside for centennial, bicentennial events, or, or is the money that's collected, or we budget for it?
That would be up to each municipality to do a lot, municipality is going to be, state law restricts what you can, the county can spend money on, but it doesn't allow money to be spent on this.
But it doesn't tell us how much we can spend, okay.
It's up to the body to make that decision.
It has.
The resolution does also allow, maybe they ask for, for from the community that is donating.
Thank you so much for declaring, for the questions.
Any other discussion or questions?
I just want to say thanks, you and Brian for the work you've done so far, because it's real, really exciting.
Oh, hey.
I would just echo that, I mean, you've done a lot of work and, you know, this, this moving along really smoothly, and we don't have a lot of time, but I think you're doing well, so we'll see. All right, well.
Thank you, uh, I do want to just point out, Evan Mylan is sitting right there, he actually
Yes.
was working on this before me, and is a member of the Historical Society, um, and has been kind of chairing the the existing group of volunteers that have stepped up, so, um, he's been super helpful, great mind involvement.
We met earlier this year, so thank you as well for all of your work, seriously, everyone, honestly, because I know it's a lot of work. All right, we're ready for roll call.
All right, so Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
And Mr. John's chance? Five yes, motion carries.
Right, thank you. And council member Somerville, I think you have our next resolution as well.
Okay. Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti has successfully, has been successfully selling city-owned residential properties under its property disposition program since two thousand sixteen. And whereas the program allows residents to build equity in their own neighborhoods and provides tax revenue while eliminating the cost of maintenance for the city, and whereas the property identified as twenty-one bricks needs the qualifications of the side lot to be sold under the property disposition program. And now for, sorry, now therefore be resolved that the city, that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the addition of twenty-one bricks to the side lot program to be sold per the property disposition policy.
Of work, it's been moved and supported, discussion, or do we have any staff? Oh, sorry, Christopher, I didn't see you up there, Christopher.
Hey, everyone, good evening.
Good evening, Christopher.
You're so far away.
I know, I just didn't see you up there.
Hey, it's good to be with you virtually. Trust me, I don't mind this, um, tonight have twenty-one, uh, bricks. The, uh, Washtenaw County provided the property in twenty thirteen, and it's been vacant, um, since two thousand one, when a single-family home was demolished due to neglect. So, um, we've sold a lot of properties through the property disposition program, the side lot program, or the residential lot program. This one meets the definition of a side lot, uh, which means it could be sold for four hundred fifty dollars, and so, um, we were approached by a resident who would qualify, um, to purchase the property under the side lot, um, program, because he's adjacent to it. Uh, right there in the Bell Kramer neighborhood, uh, property is about ten thousand square feet. Um, and we have the opportunity to eliminate a, a maintenance requirement here, um, while bringing in some tax revenue. So unless the city has a long-term plan for that property, I figured it would be appropriate to sell it under the property disposition program, uh, particularly since we have a resident who's expressed interest, um, in owning it, maintaining it, um, and leaving it vacant for the time being.
Christopher, any questions or discussion?
This is a reminder question, uh, with the side lot program, I know usually if it was someone next to the lot, they would have first dibs. And so the person who's adjacent from it has interest, and if that person chose to not want it, what's the third option, what happens next?
Goes under the residential lot for fifteen hundred, anyone can buy it then.
It, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or discussion here? All right, name none, please call them off.
And so Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. John's chance?
Yes.
Five yes, motion carry.
And moving on, Mr. John's chance, you have our.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six three, approving the embracing our differences art installation at Park Ridge and Riverside Parks. Uh, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti Art Commission has reviewed and recommended approval of the embracing our differences, embracing of differences on installation project and provide leadership to various local submissions. And whereas fifteen works will be displayed in total at Riverside and Park Ridge Park beginning in April twenty-two thousand twenty-two and ending in August two thousand twenty-two, and until left Riverside Park, six total at Park Ridge Park. And now therefore be resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the embracing our differences art installation project at Park Ridge and Riverside Park between April two thousand twenty-two and August two thousand twenty-two, I so move, support.
It's been moved and supported, and I think, Mr. Jacobs, you're back with us again today?
Good evening. I am, and we have a special guest who might be able to answer some questions, Nancy Margolis, um, came to the city a while back with the embracing our differences project, um, based out of Sarasota, Florida. There were a ton of really, really compelling, um, pieces of art from a, a national selection. And, um, and so when she pitched the idea to us and to the arts commission, um, they told her we should really have some local art featured amongst um, those that were nationally selected through this competitive embracing our differences project, and so, um, they did a call for art, the arts commission did that, and got quite a bit of, uh, really, really good local stuff for, um, embracing our differences to consider. Seven of those pieces are from YC Youth, um, and those are split up between Park Ridge and Riverside Park with four of the youth, uh, pieces at Park Ridge and three at Riverside. Um, altogether, we're looking at fifteen, at, um, fifteen altogether, nine of them at Riverside and six at Park Ridge. So, um, the pieces for your consideration here tonight and approval potentially, um, are included in the packet here. Starting on page fifty-five, going all the way down to, um, page sixty, hmm, sixty-nine.
Thank you. And then you said we had a special guest here as well, is there a question, so questions from council?
I had a question, and just about the pieces that were chosen, were they, um, like selected in any way, like specifically, were there additional pieces? And these are just the ones that were chosen, or these are just the, the ones from our students that were completed for this project?
This is why I've got Nancy here. She was involved in the selection with the embracing our differences board, and worked with the art commission closely on, uh, which exact pieces were selected. And she could promote Nancy Margolis, she's in the audience, I, I noticed that earlier.
Good, can you hear me, thank you. Thank you very much for having me today, and thank you for considering this, the pieces that you have before you were selected by the, um, the Ypsilanti Art Commission, they had very specific criteria that they wanted for each of the parks, and, um, so we fit the, um, uh, pieces into those criteria, and that's how the ones that you have were selected. The low, I should say, the local art was all selected by a very esteemed group of, of judges who are artists themselves. And they were selected by, um, Lynn Settles, who knew the artists, and asked them if they would service judges for the local submissions. Um, as I think Christopher said, there were forty local submissions between Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, a total of twenty-six have been selected, and, um, we think they're pretty good. We hope you like them.
Do you like what I see here? Any other comments or discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Margolis, uh, what are the dimensions of these projects?
The banners are sixteen by twelve, they're quite large, they're billboard size, they're, uh, installed in tripods. So there'll be, uh, two tripods at, um, Park Ridge Community Center for a total of six banners, and there'll be three tripods at Riverside for a total of nine banners.
Uh, just question, because we've had some, uh, very distinguished art in our city that's been defaced. And with those projects that you're bringing into the, the public parks, is there a plan if they are defaced, is there insurance liability that they can be, um, replaced or create duplicate? And with those projects that you're bringing into the, the public parks, is there a plan if they are defaced, is there insurance liability that they can be, um, replaced or create duplicates if that was to happen?
We, embracing our differences is taking full responsibility.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, you can call a roll.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. John's chance.
Yes.
Five yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. So we're moving.
Thank you very much. And of course, just thinking in the heart.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so we're going to move into our board of commission nominations. Um, we see here for Ypsilanti Health Commission, we have Lekeisha Williams. Um, and then we have, uh, moving to appoint our ad hoc committee for the community benefits agreement. And so I was going to over to, uh, some members of them. Oh, okay. I actually make the motion here. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so I just, um, I don't know how others were thinking about this. Uh, I would like to see us have at least two members from each ward. Um, so I've identified two people from, uh, Ward One, two people from Ward Two, and then I've identified four people from Ward Three. So I'm happy to go by ward and then, does that sound okay to have? And then we can have a discussion on each section.
Talking about seventy-two, that's one of three?
Yes. Oh, I agree with you. Right, that, that's fair. Um, but I mean, there's other ways we could. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
Both.
Like one way or the other. I guess if you would like, I could share, since I chaired the committee, I could have kind of like explained maybe my thoughts and then we can go on from that.
And then I would, um, the friend of Mr. Bar, like what would your recommendation be first on that like this and it's not, you know, not written out, how we should approach this.
Uh, the, uh, this, the, um, rule generally is that, uh, committee members be nominated in the meeting before they're appointed. You can suspend the rules if you want to appoint them all tonight. And, uh, you can do it by, uh.
I think we have to, right?
Yes, they have to be appointed.
Okay, so I can make the motion to appoint them.
So let's, we're going to suspend the rules and then give us the names and then we can discuss them later.
All right, so can someone make that motion? Suspend the rules?
Okay, I'm going to just suspend the rules.
Of course. This is a little bit supportive. Any discussion on this? Yes, on suspending the rules?
Oh, no.
No.
Take the voice vote.
Okay, uh, you can take a voice vote.
Yeah.
So all in favor?
Yeah.
Anybody opposed? All right, so now, so Mr. Bar, you're saying that now Councilmember Somerville can give us like a synopsis, give us the names and then we can make a decision based on that.
Wonderful.
All right, take it away. A lot of attention, um.
It, it was vague. No, no, it was this vague name, not more than seven, not more than ten. Can we agree to how many people we're looking for?
This is a different.
This is different.
This is for the CBO.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, this is for the ad hoc committee.
So we're talking about the ad hoc committee, waiting at six, six to eight? Oh, eight individuals, okay. And then there are folks who attended the meeting who have applied and then others who not who also applied and now you're going to talk to us about the process that you had in mind. As the, we.
Yeah, actually, there's only one person on my list that didn't attend the meeting that I listed out. Okay, so, um, I'll start with Ward One. Um, Brian Foley did not attend the meeting for the community benefits ordinance, but he did apply. Um, and then Jack Lark did attend the community benefits meeting and applied. Um, those were actually the only two applicants from Ward One. Um, it's like, I, I did find that both, um, Jack was just saving in the, the commentary at the meeting. Um, and Brian is committed to, um, you know, making sure that there is a good process for community benefits in place. So, um, and I think representation is important around Ward One. Um, I know that the applications were provided to everyone. I don't know if anybody has questions about those two, um, I guess, but, okay, um, cool. So I'll move on to Ward Two. Um, for Ward Two, um, the two that I would like to nominate, Amanda Smith and Jen Eastridge. Um, they both attended the meeting, um, and provided some good, uh, commentary and ideas for community benefits, which is the point of the community benefit processes is trying to determine, um, potential benefits that we want to negotiate with the developers. So, um, I found them to be very participatory and, um, there were a few other folks, well, maybe one other, I think there's only one other person from Ward Two. That applied. These are the two that I thought would be best fit. Um, I don't know if everybody had time to look at those or, follow up with any questions before this, but I'm happy to answer any questions if folks have them. Um, and I'll just say, I, I know the three people, you're familiar with them and, uh, I think anyone would be fantastic, but, uh, yeah, that's, okay, awesome.
Yeah, you have a question?
Okay.
Continue.
Um, and then moving into Ward Three, obviously we have more than, you know, the allowed, not like more than what we can appoint that are five from Ward Three. Um, I have identified four people that I think would be good for the committee. Um, they all participated in the public meeting and provided, um, good commentary. Um, and I've talked to a few of them after the meeting, just about the community benefits process, and I think that they would be a good fit. Um, I will just list, actually, I want to make sure.
Is this, we answer a question?
Uh, sure.
Do we ask, I mean, is there, like, when you heard some of the presentation, like, um, we owe it to the committee to have a fair balance of people who are pro and against the, like, development, not all one-sided, correct?
I don't know that that is a stipulation in the community benefits ordinance.
Okay.
So I guess.
Whatever you decide.
The purpose of the, I guess, ad hoc committee is to come up with a community, uh, mainly benefits agreement. So I guess I don't see.
I mean, if it was eight people that were against the development, it would look a certain way. If it was eight people that were pro to development, it would be slightly different. I'm saying this with, with looking at accomplishment to CBO, this is a balanced view of the project at hand.
So, um, Mr. Mylan, I was going to ask you.
Yeah, I would say that in, in going for the meeting and, and, uh, please correct me. None of the people that have been appointed thus far have taken a strong stance in the way on the development. Um, there were some, uh, there were some people that, that were very strongly against, um, some people that, that wanted to see a development, also understood the, the, the uniqueness of it. Uh, but at least with the, uh, with the four people that, that, I don't know who we have the four of, uh, but four people that, that, that gave a strong stance against or for the development.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I can go on to a little, uh, there's like reasons for me, at least the four people that I would like to see nominated. Um, I'll start with Grant Tillman. Um, he spoke a lot about the long-term affordability of the site, which I think is important and I think that many of us in council care about that. Um, Rod Johnson has lived in the neighborhood for thirty years. He used to be a member of the planning commission. Um, and I do, I think it's fair to say that he's not excited about potential development there, um, and he's been pretty vocal about that. Um, probably, I mean, that, that is important. Um, he lives right on Grove as well. Um, Mark Arthur lives on Cross Street. He's a recent member of the planning commission. Um, he is, um, more interested in seeing the community, um, become more walkable for residents and, um, he's interested in density, um, and long-term sustainability. So those are some of the reasons why I thought he might be good. Um, and the last person is Amber Fellows. She helped create the CBO and she was a pretty, one of the better participants. Um, I would say the most active participant really at the meeting. She attended virtually and I thought that her commentary actually helped the rest of the audience get engaged. So I think it's going to be important to have her, uh, in our committee. Um, she seemed to kind of get everybody more focused on what the point of the meeting was, so.
Who's this member again to second name?
Brad Johnson. He has lived in the neighborhood for over thirty years. He lives on Grove Street. He is a former city planning commission.
Are there any members in the, um, who would sort of qualify for this housing? In terms of the, I don't know if you're curious about the, um, the socioeconomic mix?
Um, well, I guess the site itself, like half of the site is set aside for like the first time uh, home buyer and assistance through M D A, or Mishra, sorry. And then the rest is like just under market rate. Um, I know a lot of these people personally and I would say at least half, well, two.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. At least one has never probably owned a home. There's one other person that I, I don't fully know. One of them is a new, two of them are new first-time home buyers. Um, but yes, I think that many of the people listed, um, would fall into a category of like needing workforce attainable housing, um, below market rate. So they would qualify if they were first-time home buyers.
Um, yeah, um, were there any other names that you were thinking?
There were actually a lot of other people that I was thinking about, but then I was like, if I take, like Amy Schroes, for example, brought some elements of just like in, environmental impacts that I thought were important, but if I, if we nominate her, we would have to take one of the, the four. Um, and then I struggled with that, so, um, we could add a member if we wanted to. I'm trying to think about.
Okay, so nine max.
And you were the.
Yeah. Well, I think if we really wanted to, we could because the ordinance. Yeah, I just like, if we really want to have, it's like, I do think that's important, but, uh, I struggled with, because I thought, like, Grant, for example, if you attended the meeting, he was very persistent in asking questions about affordability and the long-term impacts of like need restrictions and stuff, so. Um, but Amy did have a lot of good points about, um, environmental.
When you bring the names up, do we get a?
Well, I'm just offering you guys kind of what I've thought about since the last, when I chaired the meeting, so.
It's like the same process that we did when Councilmember Will Paxton gave his recommendations and then we're going to discuss it and we may change things or we may go with what Councilmember Somerville has put forward. Personally, I trust, um, you know, the names that you're giving us based on your, your work with them and talking and discussing with these individuals. Um, but if we have the will of council.
There's only one name that's in contention with me and that's Grant. Um, the fact that Grant only has one year in the community, I think it just follows files him altogether. As much as information that he introduced during the, uh, the session and, and the meeting, I think is awesome. Um, I don't think he's, uh, just that, I don't think he's lived here long enough to not participate, but to be on the commission that has such a big impact on the city.
Can I ask a question? So, so you think from, I mean, in fairness, um, I'm trying, I mean, the top two voters would be Amber Fellows and Hugh Kennedy. And I understand that that meeting maybe didn't necessarily represent, however that was, but.
There were three people who tied for, like, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. Right, and so, and not that, that was necessarily like, like, helping the well-spirited process, right? But, you know, it's just, yeah.
So, and there, but I guess my suggestions are based off commentary provided at the meeting. And I think the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to come up with, I mean, a community benefits agreements with the developer. Um, so I was looking and I talked to some folks after the meeting. I was like, Grant, for example, I thought of him after to ask some more questions on some of the concerns he was raising. Um, I was really focused on how the individual would bring something different to the committee that will help make the whole agreement that is the resolution that's come, that comes before us ultimately to vote on the best, um, and have different, um, perspectives. So I will say that Grant was one of the only, one of the only people that was very adamant, making sure that, uh, the properties aren't just like right now affordable for fifty percent of the property and that they stay, um, you know, like if a first-time home buyer buys one property and then in ten or fifteen years wants to leave, maybe there should be a requirement that they, it stays in that type of program with Mishka. I think that makes sense, right? So, um, those are some of the conversations that I have with him after the meeting. Um, so I mean, I, I don't know, I don't, he, he's been here for a year. He's a registered voter. He's participating and I don't think there needs to be, uh, a certain restriction on when someone's allowed to participate in democracy.
So, um, okay, and I think what I need, um, um, these types of, I mean, really Amber, it's just good to have critical thinkers, right? And particularly some of those, you know, kind of balances, uh, Councilmember Morgan was, you know, saying, you know, we have people on both sides, right? That bring different, um, perspectives maybe or ways of thinking about it so we can kind of mask the questions and, and come to solutions. Um, I mean, Amber makes sense to me, um, because I know she's, um, great and so heavily involved in this and so she's going to ask a lot of questions. And I think she'll have that point of view too about making sure what's down the road. I think that's, you know, something that just based on, you know, when I know her. I think the other person that, that kind of got my attention was maybe Rod Johnson, uh, who's on the planning commission and it sounds like he might have, um, not that he, he, sounds like he might, you know, based on you said that he's not necessarily in love with the project, right? So was he the one, right?
He is, he is critically at the meeting and not in support of the document, but he, when we opened up commentary to talk about potential community benefits, he offered, um, comments on what he would like to see in the agreement. So that's what I was looking for.
And I think, not to be something, it could be an important voice because there, there are going to be people who are for it, people that stand a lot of people in the middle. And so maybe on this committee having some different voices like that can help bring some of those questions to the open that, you know, could get answered and then help guide the process or, or also maybe, um, you know, inform people. And I'm going to guess some of these other people will probably still engage with this process. We won't necessarily lose those voices, but. I mean, so I guess, I mean, I don't, I only know Amber of this group. I guess I know Tyler, but who he is, um, I mean, I think from what you said before, you recommended maybe Amber and.
I, yeah, I looked for, um, I've, the people that came up top from Ward Three were people who participated in that part of the meeting where we were talking about what they would like to see potential community benefits. Um, so I don't recall anything offered by Hugh Kennedy. Um, I don't recall anything offered by Tyler Weston. Um,
I don't, I mean, based on my, the information you provided, or I mean, I think, um, I don't know. I mean, I'm going to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I think it has kind of that balance too and bringing some critical thinking from different perspectives maybe, but, um, so.
So you feel like there's not a balance?
No, no, I thought Amber and God might be of balance.
Also points of view.
And that's, I think, could be a good thing to help with this, um, but I'm open. And I don't really know based on the information I have.
So further discussion? Questions? Okay, so you're going to have to make a motion with the, with the names of the folks that you would like to appoint and then we support and then we vote on them. All right, so I always want to make sure with Mr. Bar, this is a group of names, eight names, should we, is it okay to do them as groups if we discuss it? Or do you think we should do it by ward or?
I, I'd recommend to see first if there are any other nominations. And then close the nominations and then vote on each of them. I hate to say this, but.
Each one, that's fine, that's fine. That's what you, that's what we have to do. Thank you. All right, so are there any additional nominations than these eight names? From any council member?
Um, you mentioned, um, what was, what was the sort of next name that you mentioned? I have, I have some concerns about Temperman. That's one of the, uh, candidates you mentioned. Um, and, you know, it's just, I think we should, I think we should consider the, um, just how, how the process goes. It needs, needs to be worthy.
Fair enough.
This is, you know, maybe not an ordinary person.
Yeah, I mean, I have to run, I'm the, I have to run the meeting.
No, so I think you would, you have to chair.
I still have to be like the council. I'm responsible for this.
You're like the mayor of the committee.
Yeah, I look responsible for them.
So.
Um, I mean.
And I don't think it's going to be helpful for the group or for the, the process as a whole to have that sort of, um, you know, dynamite in this situation.
Like that's already, honestly, historically.
I think, I think we all know that.
Historically, but, um.
You think something's changed in the last eight months?
Well, I think.
I'm asking.
I, I don't know.
I don't have a personal relation.
I mean, the technology was kind of flawed at that meeting, so I don't know who was on watching that meeting, but I don't know who you're talking about. I have an idea.
This is Amber.
Yeah, I think that she was very helpful in getting folks to participate in the brain. Yeah, I think that she was very helpful in getting folks to participate in the brainstorm session. Um, I had a hard time getting people to engage until she started listing off potential ideas. And I found it very helpful. Um. If people did divert back to just kind of erring grievances and I tried to turn it back in with, you know, examples of how some of those could be turned into potential ideas for community benefits, but she really offered a lot of input and um, I appreciated the participation, um, which is why I think that she would be good for this committee and she lives in the war, um, relatively close to the site, so uh, I'm, obviously, I know that my recommendations require everyone to buy in from everyone, so, um, I understand.
I mean, I would, I mean, this is not the person, I just, you know, I would, I would, I think feel more comfortable with a consideration if we're gonna vote as a honest weight of these candidates as with your next best.
I think the next best choice would be, uh, George Hagenauer. He didn't apply at the committee, but he, at the meeting, but he applied after he was there. Um. He did speak earlier tonight. I don't, and I know you're still on there, George, so you can press me later to come around. I don't remember hearing, um. Like specific ideas for an agreement, but obviously he knows that's part of the process for the ad hoc committee, so I don't have any, I don't have any concerns that he won't be a good participant in that. Maybe, so I think he would be a good, um, next option from Ward Three.
Yeah, well, I, I certainly don't agree with all the points that he's brought up. I mean, he has been active, you know, with uh emails and he has been uh on pretty much every council meeting where we have brought this up. Um, and it's not as though the committee can, you know, stop development. It's just trying to make sure that we're getting you know, enough juice for our squeeze here, so.
The one, if I could add one comment, um, it does take away the, like, female representation from the committee if we don't. Um.
That's a fair one.
With Amber Fellows, um, and I do, I did, when I looked at this committee, I, I looked at race and gender and age, um. So if we, we per, it's still not quite fifty-fifty, but it would be three out of the eight um, to have female representation, so I do think that's important.
Including yourself, right?
I, I mean, I'm not including myself because I'm, I'm, yes, I'm there responsible for them, but that I don't get to really like go down the, until it comes to council.
No, you do.
So, Councilmember Morgan had a question.
I'm gonna make a nomination.
Oh, you'd like to make a nomination? Okay, you all, are you done? Um, Mr. Johnson?
I think that's my questions. I mean, I'll, I'll defer mostly to Annie, I guess, which is, you know, this is her, her show.
I would just like to, if I had to make a nomination, I would have to nominate Tyler Weston, um, to replace Grant. And then, um, the truth. Um, because Tyler, his expertise in real estate, um, the fact that he's been involved in this process too. That's, that's the name that I would use to feel more comfortable. But it is your show.
It's not, it's not. Um, it's our show, but, you know. A council decision. I will say I didn't find much useful feedback throughout that meeting. Um, and that's what I was looking at. From individuals, who's gonna actually be able to participate in a real way during the ad hoc committee process? Um. I have concerns, but yeah, I'll just leave it there. I have concerns about that.
Oh, yes, Mr. Bar gave us direction that we should go one by one. Um, but if we have more than eight names and we're going one by one.
I would take a roll call and then take the eight that have the highest number of votes.
Got it. Wonderful. Okay, so we do them all and then we vote the highest number of votes.
I see. You can only vote for eight.
And we're voting for it.
Voting for nine, technically, right? Yeah.
Eight is what I'm saying, but we're voting for every name that's nominated and then we'll end with eight, whoever has the highest number of votes from council.
I will say, I, uh, I feel the, the short term of residency concern about Mr. Toman, however, I do think it's important to have someone just thinking about, um. The, the long-term impacts of deep restrictions and long-term affordability. Um, you know, it's not often that you get a committee where someone's thinking, you know, beyond the current project, and I think that that is important despite uh, the short time of residence.
Yeah, I guess I have a concern with the way that this is gonna go because, um, my intentions were to have these two people from each ward, so I don't really wanna. Um.
Okay, so Mr. Bar, is it okay if we go by ward? And so we'll do the first four by ward.
Okay.
And then we can go to Ward Three and do that one in the, in the fashion that Mr. Bar gave. So we'll start with Ward One, um, and if you'd like to, I can't.
Are the nominations now closed?
Oh, my apologies. Are there any additional nominations? So nominations are not closed. There are two. Jack Ward. Jack Ward, sorry, not Jack, Jack Ward, my apologies. Yeah, well, we have to go, we start to go one by one.
Yeah, I will, um, I guess I'll start with, uh, Brian Foley.
All right, so it's been moved and supported. Any discussion on Brian Foley?
All right, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
And, yep, so five, yes.
All right, so that.
I move to nominate Jack Ward.
Moving seconded. Deputy clerk, please, I'm moving fast.
Yes.
All right, everybody.
This is last name, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
All right, now, Councilmember Simmons, if you could do four too. Yes, so I move, um, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to nominate Amanda Smith from Ward Two. Moved and supported.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
And Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
With my second motion, I, um, move to nominate Jen Estridge. That's the second.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes. All right, now we're moving to Ward Three. So, um, Councilmember Somerville, you can do your four nominations and then Councilmember Morgan, if you'd like to nominate your person.
If we nominate all four of them before we get to the ninth, because he's automatically the sound, right?
But I don't, I don't think, I don't think so, if they all get the same amount of votes. All right, so we're then seconded.
Um, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
No.
Mr. Jones Chance? Uh, Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
And Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Three, no, two, yes?
Thank you. All right, and so Councilmember Somerville, you can start with your first and fourth.
Okay, uh, I will start with, um, I move to nominate Rod Johnson.
Move for it. Moved and supported. When you're ready, Deputy clerk?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Josh Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
And Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Five, motion carries.
Okay, next. I move to nominate Mark Arthur. So move. Whenever you're ready, Deputy clerk?
Okay, Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance? Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
And, um, Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Five, motion carries.
Okay, I move to nominate Grant Toman. So move. Moved and supported. They're going really fast, let's go.
I'm hanging in there. Thank you, guys. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
And Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Or yes, or no? Here it is.
Okay, um, I move to nominate Amber Fellows. So move. Support. Moved and supported.
All right. Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons? And Mr. Jones Chance?
No.
One, no, four, yes, here it is.
We, Rod Johnson, um, Mark Arthur, Amber Fellows, and Grant Tonan. All have the, the highest voters, right?
Yes.
All right, so it looks like our ad hoc committee will consist of Brian Foley, Jack Mark, Amanda Smith, Jen Estridge. And the four that I just named that I can repeat. All right, well, thank you all. Um, that was really thorough and I really actually appreciate the conversation around this, because we're taking it very seriously. I really do appreciate it. Thank you. And I appreciate your work, Councilmember Somerville.
Councilmember Somerville.
All right, so, uh, the Ward, Ward Commission Communications. There's nothing listed under here, but we're gonna. All right, well, we're gonna move on to liaisons on reports.
That's me. Yep, um, we have a meeting coming up March twenty-fourth, and on the agenda is, uh, the annual report of of the committee and Derek Jackson will be doing the presentation.
Yeah, I'll call off the names of the commission. Uh, Human Relations Commission, that's me. I actually missed that meeting this month because I was in class. Um, and so I, no, no, they didn't even meet. All right, well. Then we're to do. Okay, Arts Commission.
I haven't come yet. In the second Thursday?
All right, uh, Parks and Rec Commission. Sustainability also, yeah. Historic District Commission.
That, that's enough, that's me, actually. I have a complex, I haven't actually got to the last meetings that I'm not aware of, issues or, you know.
Uh, Fan Commission?
See you tomorrow.
All right, well, we'll look for a report next time. Non-Board Appeals. That was yesterday.
I did not attend one meeting in a year.
I know, I was in the building, but I, I didn't.
I'm so ashamed.
It's all right, we're getting back to, you know, getting this one of attending these meetings. All right, um, Liaison Reports, Sam Cog. Um, Watts?
Yeah, I Watts. Yep, and, uh, we have not had a meeting in the last few months, but actually we are meeting in person tomorrow. On the county administration, but like, so anyway.
River County's the mayor as well. All right, um, the DDA is also over there, or? Christopher, anything for? Oh, okay. Uh, hasn't happened yet. Rutherford Cool is Mr. Wilcox then. All right, Councilwoman Close Business. All right, I'll start on this side. Councilmember Morgan?
I just have a comment, uh, just about the recent resignation. I just wanna send this, um. I thought I'd shout out to those, the, the great work force and.
Um, I had a few things, but it was rather more and, um, like works. Councilmember Somerville? Nothing at this time, I think. Bryce and Tony all, I think. Great work.
And Mr. Jones Chance?
Oh, yeah, actually, I just wanted to, uh, say I'm glad that we are nominating, uh, and hopefully gonna approve of Kish Williams for the Housing Commission. Um, it's, it's nice to see, uh, someone that lives in the housing and is active in the housing getting a position on the court, and I'm very sorry that I overlooked that application back in December, but there's a lot of work with the kids of the, um.
Thank you. Um, I, I saw what Mr. Jones Chance did, and actually, I think it was attached to another, um. Another nomination, because I went back and looked at it and it was, there were two, and so I think he just missed it. Um, but I think she's gonna be an asset, um, to the commission for sure. So, uh. Communications from the City Manager. Mr. Myers?
Oh, I'm not the City Manager, but, uh, uh, City Manager McMahon has asked me to, to uh, ask if there's any questions about the two memos that were sent out over the last two days about the College of Business and about the Water Street. I know there's a lot of things happening, um, going on all the time in the city, and so I just wanted to see if there were any questions or comments.
I do have a question. Um, I just wanted to clarify, in the memo it's been that for the city, that there was an option for this other group to put in their offer like before us, but did they did they submit their interest prior to the city and the county?
Uh, so they, the city did not submit their letter prior to this meeting. They submitted the letter after this.
Thank you. That's what I understood, but I wanted to be clear. Um, any questions about any?
Anyone with any questions, you know, where I reach me, you know, I would, but we wanted to get those up before this meeting. There'll be some other communication coming out in the next two weeks before.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Um, all right, so this is our second opportunity for public comment. So if there's any member of the audience with us in person or online who would like to address council, please go for it. Evening again.
Evening again, uh, Dr. McCalla Evans here, and, uh, I'll ask you something important to ask. I was wondering, um, if where the access link was to apply to be on some of these committees. Um, I seen the Excel spreadsheet on the website, but, um, I was wondering how to sign up to be considered for some of the.
Deputy clerk, can you help us with that navigation? All right, anyone else like to do a public comment in the audience or with us online?
If there is anyone in attendees list who would like to speak, um, please, so raise your hand.
All right, going once, once, twice, being none. Councilmember Morgan, you have your favorite resolution?
Uh, do, I seem to always have it. Uh, Resolution Number Twenty, Twenty-two dash zero six four, resolved by the Council of the City, that the council may be adjourned or called by mayor, and given as a council, so move.
Excellent job.
Thank you.